I pledge allegiance to the lab of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fraser.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Abby.
Here.
Elder.
Here.
Libel.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sleek.
Here.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
No.
Okay. They'll stand as they are then. Council also has a copy of the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions or anything that we're taking off the agenda tonight?
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing fund transfers in the amount of $17,916,769 and zero cents per calendar year 2025 for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
And we're just going to leave it at that, correct?
Yep.
So that's the second reading from that ordinance.
Second reading of the ordinance to make appositions in the amount of $66,516,58 dollars and zero cents for expenses and expenditures for the 2025 fiscal year, January 1st through December 31st, for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
And that's the second reading of that ordinance.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the safety service director to enter into a contract with Great Lakes Community Action Partnership.
Madam President.
Mm-hmm.
GLCAP, Great Lakes Community, they administer a CBVG grant for us every year, and this allows us to enter a contract so they can administer our grant for us.
Okay.
Do we do it every year?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend Rule 4.
I'll second it.
John Elder makes a motion to suspend Rule 4. Jim Sleek seconds. Are there any questions on the suspension of Rule 4? Okay, roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Well, Chris Libel and a move to adopt, and Christine Wees seconds. Any further questions regarding this resolution? No? Okay, roll call.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the approval and the issuance of a warrant for payment of $7,188 and zero cents to Archive Social LLC, declaring an emergency.
Madam President, Archive Social is what we use to archive all of our social media stuff so that we can see public records. It's a second-party program that we use. They maintain all of our social media pages and archives and stuff like that. So, the invoice that they gave us for, it came in January 1st, and there was a little bit of confusion, I think, in the police department's office where they didn't get the PO in until February 18th. So, PO didn't get put in in time is what the issue is here. We've got to straighten around with POs right now.
So, 10 push-ups from the chief?
Yep.
How much do we, how much does it annually cost and what all is included? I mean, I guess the sensor, so it's a media counter, but what's in it and what's not?
So, the annual cost is, it's $7,188, I think that's the annual cost, and it includes archiving of our Facebook videos.
And social media outlet that we have.
Yeah.
It's not unlimited to the amount, but it's a very large amount. We've never even come near even half the amount of traffic that it, what is like up to next tier, I think is the best way to say it. It archives comments. If someone gets on a city-owned social media page and comments and then deletes it, we still have that. It tracks or copies messages that people message the social media pages. There's also early morning tags that get sent via email, so if somebody posts something on an unmonitored city social media site, it would go to the email.
Okay, so then if there's like a request that data doesn't come to us, does it go to the third party? If we come to us, will we take a third party?
Much like checking your email, we log into the account of Archive Social and go to information.
Not part back, did that part back? I'm not sure. I thought, I thought three years, but I'm not, I'm a policy officer. I could check there. Is that pursuant to retention policy? We have, or there's some state laws that mandate a certain amount?
It's just a retention policy.
We have. Okay. And we have a universal retention policy for all departments.
And we have a meeting once we decide what we're going to do. And it's.
And all this information is stored where? In a cloud?
Archive Social LLC. We might not even really know, because they're in charge of storing it right now.
But then everything that is said, like on Facebook or X or whatever, is picked up?
Yep, they pick them up, they do it away for us in case we need it. If it's a city-monitored social media site, correct? Just any social media site, it's not, this is what the city has.
So, the city monitors X and Facebook and?
No, it would just be our accounts.
But it's because we ask?
Yeah. So, our Facebook accounts, whatever else we want to have. Now, if it's been Rule 4. Second.
So, what are we, okay. Libel, Chris Libel makes a motion to suspend Rule 4. John Elder seconds. Any questions about the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Gleek.
Yes.
Abby.
It's not going to be like the Park Avenue project where you recycle?
No, this is a mill.
Well, this is MMB.
Mill and building.
They do a good job.
We don't have any plans on any of our street projects to do the same style of pay for that we did on Park Avenue. They probably wouldn't do it on a street like that again, maybe a smaller street. Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. What is the shape of the street from Cedar to the end of it? Is that something we should take care of now, is there or not?
It's not quite. There's the rest of Dickinson. Could it use an overlay? It probably could. But beams that we've already sculpted out, bid it out, and got funding for it with our specific limits, it'd be kind of hard to change now unless we wanted to add, you know, dollars to our budget, but at this point in time, I would probably say no.
A lot of most traffic from Cedar to?
Yeah, there's not nearly as much traffic on that part of it once you get?
But it's not, it's not near as big as?
It's not.
No way so.
What is the grant of $175,000?
So, that's through OPWC.
Is that included? Is it $441,000 or would that be a deduction off or fully one appear in the ordinance?
It's included. Yep, so the total project price for the project is the $441,000. OPWC will pay $175,000.
Which we'll get back then, so it's actually only costing us?
$267,000. Correct. Yep.
Christine Reese moves to adapt. John Haldor seconds. Any further questions on this ordinance? Roll call.
Please.
Yes.
Haddie.
Yes.
Alder.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Please.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation on behalf of the city of Fremont for a project to resurface State Route 53 from the 620 ramp, SLM 10.513, to the turnpike, SLM 12.829, and declaring an emergency.
Just to piggyback on what Paul and I were discussing earlier with the escrow accounts, this is the part that we will actually be able to enter into the agreement and contract with ODAT for the move forward.
Christine Reese moves to suspend Rule 4. Jim Slick seconds. Any further questions on the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Haddie.
Yes.
Alder.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Second. Christine Reese moves to adapt. John Haldor seconds. Anybody have any further questions?
Maybe one more.
And it's probably my ignorance, but when we put in, what, $249,000 into escrow, and then if there's money left in that escrow account, is there any legal hurdles we're going to have to go through to get that money back out of escrow?
Didn't you just hear what he said? He just told us that. We get it back with interest.
With interest.
Well, obviously, I didn't hear what he said.
Obviously.
Yeah, and like Paul was saying earlier, going this route was set to the escrow account of enables us to get it back even faster than what we would normally experience because ODAT would have to close the project out, which could take years. And then if there was extra money, they would have to hold on to that until that was all done, and then we would get that. With this escrow, we can get it right back.
Roll call.
Alder.
Yes.
Rees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Okay. Committee reports. We'll start with Angie Rees, Citizen Service Committee.
Well, last week, I'd just like to make a public announcement that last week I was in trouble, so I got home from a meeting, and it was dark, and I couldn't get into my house, so I had to call for help in Manchurian Fremont City Police Department. The best service department in the area came to my rescue. I was safely escorted into my home, and I would like to thank Officer Anne Burden for his help. And I hope that his wife, Longers, is close for a quick, because she got a little bit muddy. So that's about all I have to say.
Okay. Christine Reese, Community Partnership Committee.
Nothing on community partnership, but I'm going to do economic development from Jim. I went to a really nice store just down the street here on Front Street, called Her Boutique.
Called what?
Her Boutique.
Oh, yeah.
And they have some very nice handbags and different things like that at very reasonable prices, and I think it's a good shot to stop by.
The owner's name's Patty Lee.
There you go.
Was it Patty Lee?
It's Mary.
Oh, no.
It is just down the street, on Front Street, because you walk in almost all the way to the end.
Seth, you better go there. You'll have a handbag.
I will. Yeah, I will.
Okay. Seth Fraser, Parks and Recreation.
Talking to Cody. Cody's excited about some new activities and programs designed to keep local youth active, engaged, and entertained this summer coming up. He is going to have a posting on his social website, so I'm not going to steal all of his thunder tonight. Just be on there.
That did come out last night.
Oh, he did put it out last night. All right. So all the information's on his Facebook page from our department. So that's all I have.
Okay. Finance and Labor, Chris Rees.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, we thought we had a Finance and Labor Committee scheduled earlier today, but just this afternoon, the auditor and I had a conversation, this is February's credit to him, but that the agenda didn't have it, and we felt that to properly comply with the public meeting law, that we should schedule it for a time that's properly noticed according to the normal means in which we notify news media. So we are searching for a new date to stay consistent. I was thinking about next Thursday, but I don't know what works with the administration.
You know, just real quick, I just want to, as we're talking about this, and asking the auditor, how would you guys feel about doing it prior to the next city council? Well, you know, there's a...
Public hearing.
Yeah. Whatever would work for council, the administration would accommodate, whatever would work for city council.
Mr. Auditor, since you're primarily running the presentation, or is it Ken?
We're tech, yeah, we're tech.
I mean, what, 7:00? I mean, 7:00 next Thursday, same.
Yeah, that would work.
That would. I bet the...
13. They won't be here. I will not be here.
We, I think the auditor did email a copy of the presentation to all of council members. If any council member would like, between now and that, to Sedanagol or the PowerPoint or if they have any questions, I'll speak to the administration. We will do our best to answer any questions if you cannot be here. And just by experience with the auditor, I'm sure that he would probably do his best to answer any questions you may have also. But I will say, we do feel good where we're at with the budget this year. We've spent a lot of time and hours spent on the budget, and you passed some of the ordinances tonight that do affect the budget, and we're excited to present the budget to council.
Okay. So next Thursday, 7:00 p.m.
And then, just to kind of piggyback on the mayor's comments, last meeting, when I presented the, or we presented the first reading of the ordinance with the actual budget book, I made an announcement that the PDF of the budget book was available on the finance page of the city website, and it is the 2025, the detail was out there. When I emailed council the PowerPoint presentation and PDF, I asked the girls on the third floor to forward that to the webmaster to also add that to the finance page. I doubt it's on there now because I sent it right at the end of the day, but I would say by next week, the PowerPoint would also be available early for any members of the public that would want to look at it before coming to the finance committee or anything like that. So both those things will be available to the public.
Okay. Thank you. Jim Slick, Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to just remind everybody what Mr. Gross shared with everyone, that there's going to be a lot of construction going on in the next few months, all up and down Oak Harbor Road, and a lot of, a lot of good things happening, so just keep in mind, as you're traveling, to watch out for the heavy equipment and just drive with caution and know that it's going to be a mess before it gets better. So that's all.
Okay. Last rule is an ordinance, is John Haldor.
Thank you, Madam President. We'd like to have an LRO meeting on before next council meeting on March 20th, sometime between the end of the zoning meeting about Mulberry Street and the startup council. The discussion is going to be dealing with our zoning enforcement policy, which, after discussion with Erica and Ken, you know, some of the enforcement policy sometimes takes up to over a month to resolve itself, and I think it'd be in the best interest to shorten that process. But then also give Erica and the zoning office some leeway in how she wants to apply it based on circumstances and things that possibly could stall.
So how long do you think this meeting will take? Because I'm thinking the...
The public hearing will be five minutes.
Okay. The public hearing will be half hour.
The only discussion would be enforcement process. If you are in violation, you have, do you need three days or five days to respond? And that'd be the discussion.
Okay.
And I didn't realize this, the mayor and I were talking about that also. He did a survey with the police force of the number of cars.
The chief of law dressed up.
Okay, all right, I'll let that go then.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you.
So at 6:30 then?
6:30 for the public hearing.
Right, then.
And then we'll have a five-minute zoning or maybe 10-minute, and then we'll start the city council.
Right. Got you.
Okay. Danny Addy, Streets and Utilities.
About the only thing that I have right now, always out looking at streetlights, more than you'd realize, are the, I keep the street department busy. Awesome. Front Street, and some of the downtown will be corned off. There's a Tri-Cane Race Saturday, what do they call that?
Melt the Ice.
Melt the Ice. And I'm sure people still sign up.
Oh, yeah.
They can sign up the day.
Race Day at the Strand, at the, it looks like front entrance there. And I know it goes over to Walsh Park and back and around like that, so that is one thing to be aware of. Race doesn't last that long. It's amazing how fast they can run, yes. Some of them, like the mayor's son, he probably took it in under a half hour.
The mayor's going to take his place in this room.
Yes.
The half an hour might have to... I'll pick you up downtown.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay. Moving on to department heads. Kent Frost.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, you might notice all the buildings coming down around town in order to come and bring it up because the Old Columbia Gas Building, if you've driven by there on North Front Street, you'll notice the windows are out and they're getting ready for remediation on that. And Tucker and I actually have a meeting coming up about road closures, so that building is also going to be down. Along with that, you'll notice it's springtime. Working a little bit more closely with Erica to get some of the properties cleaned up around town that need cleaned up, and some buildings that may need to be razed, working, Erica and I and Mr. Gross work with the land bank to get those torn down. So more to come on what we're actually going to clean up, but I know that we have some big stuff in the works that's going to be cleaned up probably by the end of this summer. That's all I have.
Okay. Bob Gross.
Do you have any questions?
Do you want to say something, Angie? Yeah, I want to, I want to ask this question because the public has asked, has told me what the plans are for the land that, like where Applebee's was. Could you tell me if there's plans for that?
No. Yeah, there are many plans. That's all I have.
I just wanted to set that clear because I have been told that there's going to be a big hotel there, okay?
So Bob Applebee owns it. He's worked with the land bank to get it down. The demolition is only the first part of it. There's, Erie Environmental is going to be there. It's new solar remediation, and that's going to take some time. And so if that property transitions to a new owner, it won't be for some time yet because a new owner, no owner in their right mind would not accept that without a full bill of health for the property. And then anything after that is just frankly, conversation and speculation.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We've got transition. So last Thursday, Smith County Economic Development had their annual meeting. It was announced at that meeting that Fremont and Deuce County finished in the top 20 for the micro politin award. For those that don't know, that's a community between 10 and 50,000 residents, and so to finish, the mayor had a great vote the other day, to finish in the top 5% out of those communities and still be ranked in the top 10, and having continued to be ranked in the top 10 for the last six years is a testament to the investment we see going on here in our community. A large part of those investments in 2024 was, remember Crown Battery? We talked about that, they had a 56,000 square foot addition. They're finishing up on that, and so that's a large part of the investment. Group Health Security made a large investment in themselves as well, and those two businesses located here in Fremont, we're both recognizing, both great owners. Hal Hawke, the owner of Crown Battery, was recognized for his 18 years of service on the Deuce County Economic Development Board, and I think those laws kind of agree with it beyond just Crown, the Economic Development Board, he's a supporter of schools and a very great asset to our community. I'm going to add more to our plate for March 20th. So the Bertrand Historic Neighborhood and the city have partnered up and created this Bertrand Park Improvement Team. And so we tried to, we knew some of these other meetings were going to happen, so we tried to schedule it. We just thought, so if people come down in multiple nights, we just squeeze it all in one night. But at 5:00 on Thursday, March 20th, Andy Knapp from Thomas Porter Architects is going to be here with some renderings and concepts, and they're going to be on some tables, and they're going to be laid out, and the public is invited in because we want to kind of solicit the public's input on some different concepts and different ideas. They've come up with a pretty good layout of the park, so we, so in support of the Bertrand Historic Neighborhood is going to give their input, we're going to ask their neighbors, we're going to ask all the members of council or city employees or the public to come in. It could only take a few minutes, and ideally, we want that to be maybe from 5:00 to 6:30 so that we're out of the way for the public hearing. Not that people couldn't come in and still be millinging out there, but ideally, we want to be respectful of the business that's got to be done here that night. So exciting things coming up in regards to Bertrand Park. And then Ken talked about the demo. You'll probably go see it tonight, but a house literally came down today on South Front Street, just two blocks this way, a house came down. And so there's another house on Bertrand Avenue that's going to come down next week.
Bertrand Avenue?
Yeah, it's a three-story house that's...
Oh, really? Seth, I wondered about that.
Yeah, so if you're, it's a shame to see those houses come down, but if you literally, if you know the foundation, if you knew that there was literally a hole in the roof, there were leathers coming in.
Right.
And so that property is on the list, and that one's going to come up next week. And then lastly, downtown Fremont, it had their annual meeting this morning. A lot of good things happening in downtown, which I'm sure people will hear more about, but just wanted to keep council informed of those activities that went on in and around us. That's all I have for the sequel, Madam President. We're going to have a, I'm sorry, we're going to have a social media post go out in the next couple of days. We want to put it out too early and have people forget about the meeting on the 20th, so we're going to schedule some posts to go out to invite the public to come on down. And so I would ask you if you invite your neighbors and friends. If you've got a friend or two, bring them down.
Bob, will there be a public barbecue in between?
No public barbecue. I will, I'll bring a, we have a bowl of Starburst upstairs. I'll bring that down.
How about an open fire? Now you're talking Christmas. Now you're talking.
Is that it, Bob?
That's it.
That's it? So quick?
Well, I mean...
Steve is giving me the sign.
Is there anything to report on the cemetery, the Wayne Street Cemetery or the Woodley Street?
I don't know if Mr. Frost has anything.
I do have a plan that the Parks Department has given me as far as the cleanup in time frames, and it'll be starting early soon. I think they're going to start about April, mid-April.
Okay.
Doing parts of the cleanup and stuff. But I have a plan on my desk if you'd like to see it. It's no problem.
Yeah, I would like to.
Sure.
Is that taking all the detourries and stuff up there?
Yeah, they got to clear the brush. It's kind of hard because a lot of it's got to be done by hand because they can't get in there with the equipment. So they got to just kind of work in between jobs to get that sort of done.
Okay, thank you. Chief Wintiner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm excited to see all the activity for March 20th, for us to pack this room full of people that will also be able to see us recognize the 2024 Fremont Police Office of the Year. So we'll have that on the blackboard as well. So it'll be maybe the busiest city council meeting for a while. I do have an update on initiative, parking. Mayor Sanchez and I, and Safety Service Director Frost and I, the three of us have talked about this a lot, about complaints that come through the administration's office that come directly to the Fremont Police Department about the number of cars that are parked on our streets that appear to be possibly not operating, that we park to save the vehicles. So we started an initiative back on February 13th, and as of yesterday afternoon, we have made contact with 66 vehicles. Forty-three of those vehicles were moved by the owner of the vehicle. Nineteen of them have been towed, and four of them are in the window, hopefully to be moved by the owner of the vehicle. For a frame of reference, the parking lot out back here holds about 45 spaces. We're making great, we're making great progress on the, we still have work to do, but we're doing, we put a social media post out, lots of comments on there if you want to go visit. This is an example of some of the ways we're trying to get a hold of people, making phone calls. We're hanging these door knockers. Depending on the time of day that the officer attempts to make contact, we're not banging on people's doors in the evening. Sure, we might be using flashlights to see that we're at the correct address, but we're also following up with notes on these cars, following phone calls, stopping by during the daytime in order for us not to have to tow cars. So the initiative will continue, and that's really the update. If anybody has questions about that, I'd be happy to.
Do our cars have license plate readers or are you manually identifying?
So we're manually identifying. We don't have automatic license plate readers on our car. I love them, but we don't have those.
They're not paid for.
Well, this is, right, well, when we do this enforcement for these type of vehicles, there's no money here, there's no citation. There's a tow bill for the owner of the car that they have to figure out with the tow bill.
So why don't we want sufficient citations?
Well, I'm not saying that we don't want to pay citations or we shouldn't. In any case, if we can just get the issue taken care of as the first course of action, that's great.
I think that's huge for us, is give them the chance to move the car first, to not get a cost. Half the reason why the car's parked there is more than likely they don't have the money to fix it or get updated license or anything else. Bill, I know where you're going with that.
Chief, on another, nope, I'm just saying, I'm curious. The equipment that you're wearing, is that what a traditional officer would be wearing as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
What do you have on there? What is all...
I'm not always in uniform, usually. Today I had firearms training, so this is just a vest, body cam, handcuffs, you know, real police officers carry all this stuff, you know, so taser.
And walking down your aisle.
Yeah. So this is just like our regular patrol uniform.
Okay. The evening that Officer Perkins went in, he had endeavor and just managed to get himself into my house. I wasn't up there, but he got into my house, and he had all his equipment on. I was standing there ready for him to start taking that vest off because I thought, my gosh, something could go off. He invaded, and he wintered himself.
Right.
But anyhow, he did. He went in with the equipment on, he didn't take it off.
Wow, there's a service for that.
Is the vest top of the line, is it?
We have very high-quality vests and vest carriers, so like the actual vests inside this, exterior carrier.
Heavy or not?
No, it's not. If you see me after the meeting, I can show you a little more personal tour.
Tucker Frederickson, do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder to piggyback on Mr. Slick's comments, construction season's coming up. There's going to be many projects going around the city, so just ask everybody to pay attention, drive safe, pay attention to work zones, and get ready for the orange berets, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I do have a few things. I missed the last couple of meetings. I was officiating basketball for one, and I think I had another event, yeah, I was a school home basketball supporter. Just a few things to talk about tonight. Obviously, you heard a lot of the department heads and the administrators talk about the progress that's going on throughout the city in 2025. I want to thank council for passing the ordinances tonight. I think when we present the budgets, you're going to be a pleasantly surprised to see what auditor draw and Safety Service Director Frost and their old Department of their Doge program. And the city of Fremont, they were very, very conservative on the budget that they presented to me. I had the opportunity to go in and kind of dissect the budget, and the auditor and I and Safety Service Director spent a lot of time talking about different projects and things like that. We do have some other local street projects that, after some funds have built up over the last few years, not significantly, that we're excited to present to you to be able to address some of the side streets. I think what you're really going to learn, that we have been saying for the last several years, is most of these street projects, the larger projects, they're state and federal grant projects that require significant matching local dollars, which limits us to doing, you know, the side streets in the city that we're not able to do. So strategically, we've talked about this for the last several years, and those grants come with significant amounts of paperwork and other things that would traditionally have to be done if we were utilizing our local dollars. So just to commend Tucker and his staff because he's here tonight, and I know sometimes I can't be the easiest guy to work for, but I have high expectations, and we work really hard to make sure that we're going after every dollar that we can from the state and local level. It's interesting to hear some of the things that are happening already in '25. Director Cody Bischoff and I, also some community members, Sarah Mead from the local organization, Tanisha Slater, Tanisha Slater-McKinstry, who is a local business owner, Amanda Sears, myself. We started having discussions about this park program in 2025 approximately four to six months ago. On March 20th, council will learn what that consists of, the goal of that program. If you recall, a few years ago, we started a park ambassador program to try to prevent some of the negative occurrences and try to increase the positive interactions in the park. We struggled getting volunteers for that program for many reasons. Number one, just the timing of what it would take. Number two, the feedback that I was getting were from some of the volunteers is they were put in uncomfortable situations where if adults or juveniles would be disrespectful to them, it kind of put them in a situation of defense where, you know, how are you supposed to handle this situation? And it just became kind of an uncomfortable setting for several people that actually stopped, you know, volunteering because they weren't there to be policing, they were there to build positive contacts. I thought it was a good idea, we tried it, it didn't work. So the angle that I'm going now with other community leaders and council, we need your help, we need you to be a part of it, we need the entire community to be a part of it, is my goal is to program the entire city park system throughout the city. So in the summer, we will have different events going out throughout the week at different parks. We're hopeful that businesses, pastors, leaders, teachers, community members will step up. There's going to be opportunities for businesses to be able to sponsor some events to get their name out, but also maybe to get other businesses to sponsor other businesses. You know, for example, we're hopeful that Pottery Perfection will join us at, you know, Bertrand Park, for example, and do a paint in the park. And it's too hard for one business to be able to put that on, but if another business would sponsor that, then, you know, two businesses could get some sponsorship out of that. I have been out to some of the Fremont... There's gonna be opportunities for, for businesses to be able to sponsor some events to get their name out, but also maybe to get other businesses to sponsor other businesses. You know, for example, uh, we're hopeful that like Pottery Perfection will join us at, you know, Bertrand Park, for example, and do a paint in the park. And, uh, it's too hard for one business to be able to put that on, uh, but if another business would sponsor that, then, you know, two businesses can get some sponsorship out of that. Uh, I have been out to some of the Fremont City Schools. Uh, I'm asking teachers when I'm talking to third and fourth graders, uh, to give me ideas of things that students would like to have. And I'm asking for teachers to gather this data and to email this data to us, to myself or to Cody, so that we can try to implement actually what the kids want in the parks. Uh, we're really, really excited. The goal is to send a pamphlet, like a calendar, a summer calendar, uh, to every Fremont City School student and St. Joe Essential Catholic student, so that way they can have this and kinda post that on their, their, uh, their refrigerator for the year. Also, uh, Councilman Elder talked about our city ordinance, myself, the law director and, uh, the zoning director, Mrs. Williams and Mr. Frost sat down. Uh, we spent some quality time together over the last week or so to go through this ordinance. I don't think we have enough teeth in our ordinance. Uh, I'm getting calls and maybe you are, uh, as council members about debris or garbage or things that are left, you know, on the, on the side of the road or the, uh, I'm just giving you an example, some of the things we're dealing with. I don't wanna take too much time on this tonight, but it's important for you all to know, is, uh, the car wash behind Brickers. Uh, I went out there, uh, to grab some dinner and, you know, there were people complaining about this car wash. I drove back there and, uh, and there's literally needles in this, you know, people just, needles laying on by the trash can. And, you know, there's trash bags everywhere and, you know, it's frustrating as the mayor that I have to tell these people there's, you know, a 10-day process we have to go to and we have to mail this letter to this person that we don't even know who owns this. And, you know, it's just frustrating and it's just government red tape in the way where if we as a city and as an administration, as council can, I'm not saying we wanna go find every single person, but we need to have the authority to be able to do something right away. And I wanna commend the law director, uh, who sat down with us and what I would describe as give us some great legal advice and some outside the box thinking, uh, doing what he could do to help us stay, stay in compliance. But also, uh, we need to clean our city up. You know, it's, there's, there's, there's trash, there's debris. Honestly, it's unacceptable and, uh, we just have to put the initiative into holding people accountable. And, uh, the police chief and, uh, Ms. Williams, the zoning director, I have them aligned, you know, uh, some of these communication gaps, they get so busy dealing with all these other things that sometimes, not that we lose focus, but manpower is a problem. And, you know, there's just a lot of reasons on why some things happen. And, uh, so I'm really trying to double in on the, the focus of the cleaning that up, uh, programming our parks. Uh, Mr. Gross with Economic Development and Mr. Frost and I, or, you know, there's things coming up on Planning Commission where people are looking to make some changes for some possible new things coming to Fremont that's ultimately gonna end up on your lap here at council. Uh, there's just so much going on, I'll be honest with you. 2025 is, uh, is kicking up really fast. Usually, sometimes this is a slower part of the year, but actually it's, it seems to be very, very busy, you know? So, uh, this, uh, we also have, um, some strategic planning coming up that you all will, uh, be getting informed of about, we're about, uh, a little over 60% through our thing Fremont plan. So, uh, we're in contract with the Toledo Design Company. Uh, we're talking to Stan Tech, uh, who was the engineering company that helped us remove, uh, the Baldview Dam. Derek Dalton is an engineer that works for Stan Tech. That is a Fremont Lost Little Giant alumni. And, uh, we're gonna have some conversations of, uh, I've spoken to Representative Clint, he joined us on the meeting. I've spoken to our state senator, Mr. Reinecke. Uh, we really wanna start looking at plans on the river and seeing what opportunities we have to do with the river there on the other side of the river. We have some EPA requirements we have to meet there still and, uh, we wanna look at some designs and concepts, but from an engineering standpoint and an architect standpoint, uh, to figure out whether there's some state or federal funding to help clean that up and maybe try to bridge that part of the other side of the river into downtown with some walking paths. And remember, uh, we're 10 years, some of us have, I've been, I'm 10 years into my, to my administration and if we look back, most of you have been here and, and all of you have been a significant part of all of the progress that we've made in the last decade. You know, so imagine what we can do with the momentum we have, uh, if we continue to work together and keep, you know, partisan politics out of what we got going on here. I just, I think I'm very optimistic. I want you to remain optimistic. I want my team to remain optimistic. Uh, there's, uh, there's a lot of barriers, you know? We're struggling to hire at the police department. We have officers leaving, uh, for many reasons, you know? Not all bad, you know, just people, people are leaving and, uh, the auditor and the safety service director and the chief, I will share this with you publicly, we did go into, uh, early negotiate, uh, negotiations for the police department. Um, their contract, we were set to go in negotiations next year. Uh, I felt and the safety service director felt and the chief felt that it was very important that we would be open to negotiations in year early. Uh, we understand that law enforcement is our number one priority in our administration as far as looking at what we can do to be competitive. Uh, we also know we can't give away the farm and the auditor's directly involved in that process and we wanna be fair to our men and women who serve our community, but we also have to be fiscally responsible. So, uh, we are in that process. I am not partaking in those meetings. The auditor and the safety service director are partaking in those meetings and will ultimately, uh, help come to a conclusion on what they thinks in the best interest for the city financially and will, um, and I will, uh, more likely than less likely follow their recommendation as, uh, I respect the auditor's, uh, decision making and the safety service director. So as the mayor, they are handling that process. I, uh, asking them respectfully to handle that process and then ultimately that will come to city council. So any of those changes are not currently in our budget because we don't know what that looks like. Uh, and I do not have plans currently as an administration to open up contract negotiations with any other of the city unions at this time. It's simply just the police department because of the need for police officers. Sometimes you just need to say what it is and, and honestly, quite frankly, we don't have any, uh, we don't have any difficulty hiring in any other department in the city, you know? And, uh, our, our police department is the vital part of, it's my number one job is making sure we have adequate safety in our city. So I'm gonna make sure I fulfill that duty. And the chief and I are, uh, and the safety service director are hand in hand and, and making sure that we are doing everything we can to address that. So, uh, are, are there any questions of anything I talked about? I, I talked about a lot of things. There will be more, there's a lot more I could talk about, but I'll stop there. Anything else? All right, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Jim Melli?
I just think it's fantastic that Fremont's ranking in the Metropolitan. Six years ago, you said that's just amazing. Just the truth, your hard work, the work that's done and all of the positive efforts, it's just fantastic. That's all I have.
Thank you. Eli Elder?
Uh, just one thing. Um, I know every year I try to update people on, um, tax season and obviously we are in our tax season for, um, and the IRS has issued a statement to expect delays this year after the Trump administration slashed 6,000 positions from the IRS and has also put the IRS on a, um, longer hiring freeze than other federal agencies and departments. So they don't know when they would be able to hire back any employees at all at this point. Um, they also issued a statement that people who claim they earned income tax credit or the additional, or the additional child tax credit need to anticipate higher delays. And those credits, um, have started seeing updates via the IRS's where's my refund tool, because people already are not seeing their refunds. So if you have not filed your income tax yet, um, and you do count on that as income for the year, I urge you to start your filing now. Uh, the other thing that the IRS wants the, uh, the public to know is that apparently there is quite a bit of social media, um, new, uh, posts and chatter going on that the, um, that, that, that people are waiting for the IRS to just go away, um, so that you don't have to file your taxes at all. That is not going to happen. So please do not believe that. You do have to file your income tax returns. We don't want to see anyone falling for fake news and that's definitely fake news. So if you have any questions at all, and I know everyone always snickers when I say go to IRS.com because you, you know, you can wait for hours if you try to call them, but they're trying as best they can to have the truth and the facts out there for, um, for our public. So please file your taxes. You have to file taxes this year. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Bob Gross?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
I moved to a June.
Second. Jim Sleek moved to a June. Just a slight little second. Layla?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.